Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you all to the February 4th, 2014 Village of New Pauls Planning Board Meeting. My name is Maurice Whitman. I'm the chair. Other members present this evening are Rich Stephens, Liz Harsho, and John Litten. Michael Zeller is absent this evening. Our attorney is George Rodenhause, and our secretary is Brogan O'Donnell. We have a brief agenda this evening. One is a continuation of a public hearing for Church Street Commons. And the second is approval of a final plat for the subdivision of properties owned by Floyd Niffen. And even though the escrow shows them as going in that sequence, I'm going to ask Mr. Niffen to sit there, and we would like to take his item first, since it should be brief. So, lady and gentlemen of the planning board, we've got the two problems or the two things that needed to be satisfied after our last meeting with Floyd were the Health Department -- actually, three things. The Health Department approval, which we received a copy of, and our attorney did approve the common driveway easement and maintenance agreement, and the addition of the note -- I didn't see that. Do we have that there Floyd? So, the addition of a note on the final plat concerning the common driveway and reciting second, third, and fourth paragraphs of the letter from the fire department to me dated November 29th, 2013, deleting the phrase "it's understood that where it appears." And the indication on the final plat of potential trail connections between Henry DeBois and the Lands of the -- should I say Shuanggang or Shangam? The reserve into the north. Okay, so having completed all those, and I don't know that we have the final -- do we have a final bill from you?
I don't know. It's probably not.
Okay, so the last condition is payments -- payment of all fees and escrow. It's possible that it's done Floyd, but we will leave that as a condition that we have to check on first. But, so, subject to the payment of all fees and escrow based on our research, to make sure that we have billed and paid, and Floyd has paid everything, may I have a motion to approve the final plat as submitted on December 17th, considering the receipt of the other items that I've already mentioned?
So moved.
May I have a second please? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is this yours?
Yeah, we do need one tomorrow to stamp and make ours, so that will be that.
So I'll get that delivered tomorrow.
Okay, good. So, Mr. Niffen?
When you say "to stamp," you mean if you're -- do you want me to get you a vellum or am I allowed to do that?
That would be good, yeah. Okay, so...
Can I have that copy back?
You may have this copy.
You did get -- I did submit 10 copies.
I'm sure we have it, yeah. I just didn't bring it with me.
I told you you needed it for the county.
It's for the county. It's in my law, isn't it?
My law, I'm pretty sure. But you may want to call up and check before you have it. I'm pretty sure it's my law.
Thank you Floyd. Take care of yourself. Don't get your kids sick and send them to my school, please. Our bus drivers are people too, you know.
Two or three days ahead of you.
Thank you. Okay, we now have a continuation of the public hearing for item number PB 1307, which is the site plan modification to an existing building for 46th Church Street, also known as Church Street Commons. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, come on up. So may I have a motion to -- we don't have to reopen it.
To reopen, yeah.
We have to reopen it?
Yeah.
Okay. May I have a motion to reopen the public?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hi John.
Hello.
Okay, so we received a PDF. Do you have hard copies for us?
I have a hard copy.
A hard copy?
Yep. I just received that this afternoon.
I can maybe put a small one, so.
Not so long.
Well, I have to jockey back and forth between the last and the first.
Okay, so this does look a lot like the PDF I found. Okay, so George, you did review this?
Yeah. It had just about everything. My only thing was questions. Whether some of the other things we talked about were supposed to be on here or not, I don't know from my notes. These trees are new between the building and the neighbors.
Yeah.
But there's some discussion about more trees. Or did you say you were going to put more trees along this line, along the driveway?
Along here.
Right.
Over here, there's not really much room for trees.
Right, right. I can see that. So I didn't know whether more were going to be put here or not. The way it is, is that what the board wants? That's the only... The other note was, people had talked about traffic calming in the driveway.
Yeah.
Something, and I don't know how that turned out in what you are proposing, if anything.
What we are proposing?
What Mr. Johnson's proposing.
A slowdown sign.
Okay, so I don't -- now, I didn't receive -- we didn't receive anything from the fire department?
Well, I have that one letter from Rich that I gave you.
Which is...
Which I have from the fire department.
From Rich? Travis.
Yes.
But we haven't got anything from him, okay. So, you know, among the loose ends is this -- is the business with the fire department approving the access in that small driveway?
Yeah.
And I think, George, am I correct that the driveway being non-conforming, is that the right word?
Supposed to be 25 feet?
Yeah.
And this is what, 11 -- 17? 17.2?
Where the chimney is, it's 12 and a half.
Okay, so yeah, it's not conforming in that sense. It's not official. Says you should have 25 feet, so...
And had they come to us before they built anything, would we have said, "We can't do that," or "You need a variance"?
Yeah. If this was not built yet, you'd look at that, and the question would be, "Would you approve a more narrow driveway? Would you require them to go to get an area variance because it's supposed to be 12, 25 feet? Get a variance down to 12 and a half?" Now that it's built -- it's not as built, it almost becomes academic question because you have the number of people back there to be serviced. You're actually reducing the number of bedrooms. You're not increasing the number of bedrooms. So in a sense, you're reducing the risk, and you can't move any of the buildings. So it's kind of a fait accompli. You have to accept it the way it is.
But whether there are two people living there, or 20, or 40, if the fire department can't get there with their equipment as they need to, it's an issue.
It is.
And it's not an issue for the applicant. It's an issue for the property.
Well, it's a requirement that applies to multiple dwellings, but not apparently to the two-family residents. So it wasn't an issue when this was built as a two-family residence. Now that it's being converted, it becomes a question, and again, the buildings are all built. There's nothing you can do. It actually is reducing the number of people in the building, so it's an unusual situation.
Yeah.
But this was built to be converted.
As three, two families, the driveway's in compliance. But when we take the other two families to a four, there's two four families.
This is one, two family?
Yes.
No, I'm saying, at what point does the driveway 25-foot width come into play?
When the multiple dwelling, the multiple family...
Kicks in.
Kicks in. Multi-family it's called in our building.
So when we went from two units per building?
As a two-family dwelling, it wasn't considered to have that requirement of a 25-foot access. Now that it's a multi-family, it is required, now that it would become one.
Yes.
So, I understand. So, you know, in a way, we can't go back and do history over again, but the building was designed to be converted in a way, and so perhaps it should have been looked at as a multi-family initially, and maybe it'd be a different result. I don't know what the result would be. But now that it's been built, flexibility is gone.
It didn't have the level of review when it was first built.
Sure. It did not come to the planning board at all because it was a two-family with two units of eight bedrooms each. And there's nothing in our building code that restricts the number of bedrooms other than density and issues like that for an apartment. Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I understand, I didn't understand, but I understand now that now that it's a multi-family, or I would like it to be a multi-family, we have an issue with the driveway. Initially, the fire department came, inspected it, and they told us that it would be fine. They could get their trucks up there. That being said, I guess my question is, legally, do you guys have the authority to waive that restriction?
Yes, we do. Not to waive it, but to modify it to make it safer. And this happened before, and other projects have come before the board. They didn't have exactly a 25 feet.
Can I ask a question on the New York State Fire Code? Can we waive New York State Fire Code?
No. No. So the question is, would you deny the multi-family because it doesn't comply with the fire code and allow it to continue as two eight-bedroom units, which is even more people? Actually, you're not -- you're reducing the number of bedrooms by finishing two bathrooms. Two kitchens and two living. And, yeah. So you're reducing the number of bedrooms.
I understand that reducing the number of people, I think that's wonderful.
Yeah.
My concern is still with the safety of the people who live back there and the liability of the village. If we say, "Oh yeah, it can be, you know, 14 and a half feet wide," or at the chimney, 12 feet.
12 and a half.
12 and a half feet. We have then recognized that there's 12 and a half feet thing, but yet we've approved it. And then if something happens, it then would possibly fall on the village.
That seems exactly why we've been asking for a letter from the fire department to say, in their opinion, just as you said.
And they seem to be hedging big time.
Well, until we get a letter from them, or something in writing, there's nothing for the record. And I don't doubt what you're saying, that a year ago, they said it was okay.
So George, what are our options?
Well, we could keep the hearing open until we hear from them. That's number one. Send then the formal letter from the board asking for their input because of the situation that is now...
We've sent an email to the chief saying that.
Yeah, and I believe the chief had answered that a letter or something was already -- it was already looked at at a previous time.
It was looked at? I didn't see that.
Asked and answered. He's been asked and answered, but we don't have anything to show for that. Yeah, but do you acknowledge that he acknowledges that he was asked?
Well, let me see what I have here. I'll tell you what I have. And I can tell you that from my perspective, it's not sufficient.
Okay, well that's...
That I want to have what...
I understand.
What is -- but what shows that we have done our due diligence. And I don't know, I mean, I don't know when this was built. How many years ago? Was it two years ago? A year ago?
Yeah.
Last year?
Last year.
Was it the same chief as is now?
I don't know.
Okay, so, you know, what I would want is the current chief to go there now, not to look at his notes from last year or two years ago, to go there now and give us a letter saying that, in his opinion, it's safe for him to get his trucks there, no problem. I don't care if there's 12 feet, 7 inches. It's fine. That's it. And that says that we did our due diligence, that we looked at this. Because, you know, you've said, and there's always the possibility, that you can put more buildings on here. You can increase the density further than what it is now.
Yes.
So...
Like coming before you.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah. But what I'm saying is that the fact that you're reducing the density and therefore we should be happy, yeah. I mean, I'm happier to have it be something more like what you're going to be building than what it is now, but I'm not happy about the driveway. I'm not. And I don't know what the other members are saying. But I would like this to be a safe situation for our residents and for future residents. After you sell this place, after your kids sell the place, I would like it to be safe. So that's the deal.
Yeah.
So, were there other things, George, that...
The driveway width, is that a local code or is that a state code?
It's local.
It's a local code, which is what?
The 25-foot is local code.
Right.
However, the fire code of New York State says that the dimension has to be 20 feet. Okay, so it's slightly less than what we're requiring, but it's still more than what the minimum is.
That's the state code, 20 feet.
State code, state fire code.
I've never heard that before.
So there were two issues. Did you want to see an enclosure on the dumpster or just where it is?
I thought we had a regulation that all dumpsters need an enclosure.
What I asked John to do was to speak to the building department to find out what the requirements are for refuse and recycling, and to get the containers there, and if it has to be enclosed, to be enclosed, and like that. And I didn't hear anything from the building department to see whether they did that. I don't know if you spoke with them about that?
I did not speak to them about the garbage.
Okay, so we have some things for...
And the other one was about the lights. I don't know how that came out. Yeah, well, the lights...
They're trying to remove or shield?
Yeah, right, or redirect. Yes, they were redirected. So that doesn't show, does it show in here? It just says existing lights. Yeah. But somehow, the easy way to handle that, I don't want to do this over for you, but it's just one note somehow in this, unless it's there, that the lights, two or three lights, whatever the direction is, will be redirected away from... They were. They were. They were to K.D.'s satisfaction.
Okay, so, and what George is saying, that we need a note on the drawing that says that the lighting is not directed at neighbors' houses, that neighbors' houses are not affected by your lighting. Is that what they're saying?
Directed away from neighbors' houses, right. In that wording. Yeah, just a note somewhere that the lighting of the parking lot is -- will be or is directed away from neighbors'.
And it isn't only in a parking lot, because there are some that, right? There are some that are on.
One, two, three, four.
Do you have anything in the driveway itself, John?
Yeah, this is, nah. This is parking lot.
On the back corner of that property, you're going, right? That one?
This is the one that was focused up here, yeah. That was all I could see from the discussion.
Okay.
What would it take for me to, because quite honestly, if New York State Code says it's, "I need 20 feet," I don't know how I could ever possibly mitigate that. And if that's something that you guys are going to hold me to, or if it has no control over you, or you have no control over it, I should say, I think that I should probably either toss this, because, you know, I can't squeeze 12 and a half, 20 feet out of 12 and a half. What I can do is I can ask if you'll allow me to amend this site plan to take this house down and build my two units. As, I didn't want to do it now for various reasons.
Does that take this house down?
Yeah.
And then building the other units on?
Yep, this is... You own this house already? I do. Okay. You know, this isn't what I wanted to do now, but I can't, I don't think you can override New York State Fire Code.
Well, I don't know that it's applicable on this type of application. George can tell us that, but I just want to restate what I told you.
But if it's not safe, I don't, you know...
Well, but this is, you know, I don't, I can't speak about the New York State Code. I don't know. George will have to be able to help us.
The building inspector didn't seem like, he thought there was probably some ways to get around it, but I don't, at this point, I don't want to...
To get around the driveway?
Yes, because the buildings are sprinkled. If I can come up with another means of fire protection, that may suffice in the code, but you know what? What I don't want is to waste everyone's time, and I certainly don't want to...
Right, and, you know, well, this is part of the problem that we face with retroactively approving something, right?
Sure, sure, I understand.
And, but what I, I just want to reiterate what I said before, and George can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that we're not asking you to tear this building down now.
No, I know.
And we're not saying that because it's not 25 feet, we're not going to approve it. What I said, and I think I'm right, what I said was, "I need the fire department to reassure us in writing that this is okay with them."
Yeah.
That they can get their trucks there safely, fight fires back there. I've seen that, I've spoken to them before about long, narrow driveways, and they had an issue because getting in and getting out. They needed stuff both ways. And the more density you add back there, the worse this is going to become.
Yes.
So...
Yeah, I just, you know, once again, I don't know that you guys can supersede the New York State 20-foot code. Well, the issue is, we have existing buildings, and we're changing the use of existing buildings. It's not like a new construction. So Liz, I have to look at that in more detail to see, you know, whether he's right that we could balance this off with some sprinkling.
Well, I don't know if the fire...
John, where you might have a problem is when you go in and add new buildings to this property.
With what?
With that 20-foot.
Well, what he's saying is that the house will be gone.
I would remove the house.
Which will make it 25 feet.
If I added more buildings. You know, for financial reasons, I didn't want to take this on at this time. But, you know...
You don't have to. You could get approval and do it later.
Yeah, yeah, and...
Doesn't he have to start building within a certain period of time?
Yeah, yeah.
Is it a year?
He does, a year.
A year.
Yeah. I'd be happy to go, I went to the firehouse twice looking for the chief, and I didn't get a return phone call.
Well, I sent him an email when I got whatever he sent. Did I copy you, Brogan, on what I sent him?
I don't believe so.
And, you know, at this point, oh, you know, I called him. I called him at the firehouse. I didn't speak with him, but I did leave a message. There was only voicemail there. And I explained to him that we needed something in writing that was as a result of a recent inspection, not when it was built, but now, what the conditions are now. I needed his approval for that this is a safe condition.
Well, he came to my office, and he, this was recently, this was yesterday, and he explained how people have been trying to get hold of him, but he is not going to return any calls because Rich looked at the building code and says that until there is a, he says, "Fire department input welcomed and advised always, but applicant should have his design professional show on certified plan building and fire code compliance."
Right.
Until then, oh, he said, "This can then be reviewed by my office and fire department." So until that is shown on a site plan, the fire chief will not look at it.
Okay, so what he's saying then is...
He doesn't want to make a decision.
Until, he doesn't want to make a decision until this is actually within compliance of the 20 feet.
Right. Which can't be.
Which can't be.
Yeah. He's never going to look at it. I think the issue is, we got existing buildings, and I think if the fire department says that the building, that the trucks can get in and out safely, that we can approve a planning, a site plan.
Right, right.
But if they're not willing to say that, we are stuck with the 20-foot width requirement, and we don't have any basis on which to vary it. You know what I mean? We have to have somebody tell us something. We can't just make it up here. So, we're kind of stuck on that one issue. And then, and an important issue, I'm not saying it's a minor thing. Yeah, I agree wholeheartedly. But the board itself can't take action without hearing from the fire department.
May I ask Mr. Johnson, why you say that you would like to then amend, possibly one of the provisions, is to change the site plan so that you would take down the building in the front so that it would be able to get your 20 feet or 25 feet?
Yeah.
But at the same time, add the other two buildings?
Yeah.
Why do they have to go hand in hand? Why can't you just say, "I'll take down the building"?
Financially. My bank that gave me the loan gave it to me based on X amount of income. And before I take the building down, I'd have to go back to them and ask them if I can take the building. They may not, they may tell me, "I can't take the building down," but if I can show them that I'm replacing that income elsewhere on the property, I'm sure they would be amenable to it.
Well, because...
What I, yeah, essentially, building these two duplexes, you know, I'm losing the income from there, you know, so it's tight. You know, the numbers are very tight.
I get it now. I thought that...
You may be losing some income on building number one, too, if you make that conversion.
Yeah, if I wasn't building, yes, exactly.
Exactly.
Exactly. Yep, so in essence, or in reality, this building, I would be gaining, in the two new structures, I'd be gaining a total... I'd be gaining a total of 12 bedrooms, but I'd be giving up eight bedrooms. So the net gain to me, bedroom-wise, I know, I know you don't like to hear bedrooms, the net gain to me is four bedrooms. But it's costing me 12 bedrooms to build, and I'm tearing down, you know, it's... But I believe, at the end of the day, it would be a very nice complex.
Yeah, I think that's right, but that's not our concern.
I know.
And, you know, your, you know, your issues are-
I understand, she has and I am.
No, I can't. I get, I mean, I want you to be happy with what you do. I want you to do this because you want to do it.
Yes.
And if there are things that you want to do that are a problem for the village code, or for safety, or whatever it is, we're gonna try- No, no, not tough luck, we're gonna try to make it better for you, but, you know, we can't change the law, and I don't want to approve something that could compromise safety for current future residents, so-
Now, could he apply for a variance from the ZBA, which would then kick it to the state?
No, he's gotta go through Pomona, he's gotta go through fire code.
Okay, so the fire department, so he'd have to go directly to them, not to the ZBA, then into that?
Our ZBA doesn't have any more power than we have in changing that fire code.
So he could make an appeal to get a variance, a variance-
From the state code.
To the state code.
Yep.
For an existing building?
Brogan?
For an existing building, you think that's-
I-
You can make a bill when you get her, you know.
But telling me you're gonna send the Rich Travis's memo?
I printed it out.
Okay, so you didn't send an email?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess.
I couldn't find an email, but okay.
He did not print out an official memo, it was just that-
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. Did you get this, George?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So let me read this. Quick note about fire department access on the site. Fire department, okay, so this is old, this is not new. He sent this-
That's the only one he said he sent to the state.
Okay, I thought you were, I thought you said on the phone today that he was gonna do another one.
He said that it wasn't to the state.
Okay, so this is old news. You saw this?
I believe so.
Yeah, and he said that he spoke to you about it, and maybe he spoke to you again about it today? Did you speak to Rich about fire stuff today?
Maybe I didn't see that.
So this is, this is dated June, January 30th. And my, well, I'll overread this now. Just a quick note about fire department access on the site. Fire department input is welcome and advised always, but applicant should have his design professional show on a certified plan, building and fire code compliance for fire apparatus access roads. Section 503 in the fire code.
Yes.
This can then be reviewed by my office, Village Building Department, and the fire department. Change from one and two family dwellings to multifamily dwellings now requires building code compliance since the occupancy of the buildings on site are proposed to be changed from dwellings governed by residential code to our occupancies, our letter R occupancy, governed by the building code. There are other code issues that I've discussed with the applicant as well, so he's already aware that my office is involved with the project. I've not reviewed fire code 503 and how it may or may not apply to this project. As stated, that is a job initially for the applicant's design professional to investigate. So-
Okay, for other options, leave it as it is.
Leave the place as it is.
Yeah, well, yes, yeah.
Because Rich also mentioned something to me about the certification of the sprinkler system being a different type than what is, would now be required for-
Yes, but it's easier, we talked to the sprinkler installer, and he says-
Okay, so that's our problem, okay.
He designed it to be retrofitted.
Great, great, okay.
Yeah.
So, so here we are.
So here we are, so either I get a letter from the fire department, which I will work on this week.
Okay.
And if I don't get anywhere with them, what does it take to amend this application?
Well, the other thing you can do, too, is talk to the state fire code.
Yeah.
And-
But that's not gonna satisfy our village code.
And for the fire department here.
What should, it should-
We need, we, the planning board, are entitled to have the fire department tell us that this is safe. Anything that's not in complete compliance with the code, which was already approved by fire department when it was established, one would hope. But this is different now, this is less than what they, what the code requires. The state code is a separate issue that I'm not familiar with.
But if the state says-
No, but if he gets it varies from the state code.
...it's okay, then it would be-
This doesn't vary our code requirements, we have to hear from our fire department, because we-
Which to me seems like a simpler deal. Whether the building department spooked the fire commissioner with this note, I don't know. But, you know, Rich Travis is a good building inspector, fire inspector. He knows what he's talking about. And, you know, I know, John, that you want to do this as quickly and inexpensively as possible. I get it. But there are some corners that, when cut, bleed, and this may be one of them. That it might be better for your long-term health and financial picture to do it the way it should be done, so that these things are not so convoluted and cat-chasing its tail. I mean, we've got, you know, whether Rich is right about the, what did he call it? Design professional. I mean, is that DIPOL? No.
No, no.
But, you know, someone who knows, because the issue of the speed bump of, you know, will the fire department say, "Speed bump, no problem", or is it gonna say, "Whoa, wait a minute, that's gonna screw up this", or, "I can't take my truck in with a speed bump"? So, you know, maybe that's not an option. And so we have to figure these things out first. I mean, had this been done a year ago, or whatever it was, we might have been able to shortcut some of these things, to make it so that it'd be smoother in the future, but... So, can we get a summary of what it is that we need so that everybody's on the same page with what's left? We spoke about the, about the fire department letter. We spoke about the enclosure and number of refuse and recycling. We spoke about the lighting being noted on the drawing as being not, as being aimed away from neighboring buildings. Was there anything else that anybody can remember?
Lighting, maybe with speed, the basement dumpster, bike racks?
Bike racks, I got the show. Someone said it was okay, and I don't remember-
The bike racks.
Because the shed is the bicycle-
Yes, but I don't remember that that was deemed to be sufficient. I remember hearing something like that, but I didn't see anything.
Michael thought that if it just said bicycle rack was in the shed, that was sufficient.
Yeah, that's fine, but I don't, I don't know. I asked John to speak with the building inspector to make sure that his shed is in compliance with the code with respect to bicycle storage. So, lighting.
Just as a, and just throwing out this statement. If the chimney-
Came down?
Right.
That would buy me 14.6 feet at best. Yeah, yeah. Yes, yeah.
So I will, I will talk to the fire chief, see if he gets me something. If not-
Then you wouldn't have to take the house down either.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, in a moment, in a moment, yes. Go ahead, John.
If not, what do I, can I just amend my application?
Yeah, you can, you can ask to amend and put a new plan in, but you should have DIPOL do one so that we can review it.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, add your buildings on there.
Yeah, yeah.
Amend this site plan application. So, are you talking about those as two families again?
Yeah.
So you end up, you end up one, two, three, four, two families?
No, more.
I would, I would- I would have two runs of six families. Okay, so the buildings would become integrated?
Yes.
I see.
Still, you have two buildings on the site.
Two buildings, then these, there would be this building and that building.
With the house down?
And that would come down, too.
Sure.
So it's three contiguous units without any interconnection, right?
Correct.
Yeah, just three outside entrances.
Oh, six.
Okay, six outside, up and down?
Yeah.
That's not, I mean, that's an amendment, but that's a perfectly legitimate amendment to put onto this application. In the sense that it's the same parcel, the same basic idea. I'll see if I can get that-
If that is the case, just as one of those technicalities, would you then have to ask for a lot line adjustment and melt, combine these two properties into one property?
Yes.
Yeah. Bro-
Broke?
How much do I owe you this check for?
I owe her 700.
Let's talk about that before you do that, John, though. Don't finish that yet.
Okay, so that, yeah, that would just be a merger deed to, I assume, although this, this was created by, I guess this was created by a subdivision on this board, some point.
No, those were existing, two different existing lots.
Now, this, but you have a lot created by deed or by subdivisions?
It was, it was created by subdivision by Amelia Broadhead, 1888.
Right.
Filed in the county.
Did I get a letter from her?
I wish I could. Where are you, right here?
It's actually right here, they subdivided this. Funny, this used to be, John Street used to go through from Prospect straight down to John, down to Church. And off of there came Spring Street and Hill Street. And in 1977, Mayor John Vett and his administration gave away John Street, Spring Street, and Hill Street for a dollar, land-locking the cranzes, four separate lots, virtually overnight, behind their back, and-
And that's what you-
Yes.
So that, yeah, that should be- That's subdivision.
So, so that hasn't been done, you're saying?
It hasn't been done until now, but, you know, it's interesting how we mention it. We haven't focused on the need for an easement over this property for this. Is there an easement that exists for this back?
I created one.
You created one, so you have a declaration somewhere that there's an easement over this lot to get back here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's to be filed with the county, or just the-
It's filed.
It would be filed.
Recorded, but I guess, and that could still work for this.
Yeah.
If it was combined, but if it combined, it would be easier.
Yeah, another fire, fire means of egress to this property is up John Street here, which I have a legal right of ingress egress based on my filed map of 1888. The village gave a quick claim deed to these three roads, but they did not give my right to ingress egress away. And-
So wait a minute.
That's something I-
So who owns it now?
The gentleman that owns Turtle Rock owns it.
Okay, subject to your right of ingress and egress.
Yeah.
So wait a minute, so that, there's a driveway on to, Prospect is the main driveway, but is there also one?
From Prospect, from Prospect down to Church Street is- Here's Church Street.
Yep.
Here's my property. Here's John Street that runs up to Prospect Street.
Yes.
Prospect Street continues across. But I have ingress egress rights to John Street, as well as Spring Street and Hill Street.
So that means you can go through Turtle Rock's property?
Yes, yes.
And what connects?
Along with my tenants.
What connects your property on here?
Former John Street, right in here.
Little bit of a slope.
Well, that might be a way, I don't know if fire department can make that turn.
I have no intentions of doing that.
Okay, so let's not talk about it. I mean, it's interesting, and I like Mrs. Broadhead being brought up. Always eager to talk about her, I think.
By the way, they spelt their name wrong on the street signs.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
How is it spelled?
Without the A.
Without the A, so it'd be R O D, so it's like a German-
Beru.
Broadhead. So that could be even a-
This is yours.
That's the one you brought for us?
It might be your only one.
Yes, there's another one down there.
Okay, so one other note, well, two other notes. One is about the timeliness of your submissions to us.
Okay.
Getting things the day of a meeting, uh-uh, can't do it.
I understand.
We normally, the deadline for normal submissions is two weeks before a meeting for something that we've been ongoing hearing, requiring minor corrections, a week before. So that our members have at least a weekend to look at this and have enough time.
That's more than reasonable. I just got it today myself.
I understand, but what I'm saying is that for-
The future.
Yes, now, we didn't explain that to you last time, and, you know, Brogan's knew she hasn't been, she hasn't been through the mill enough with this, but that's the deal. And the other thing, I'd like to talk a bit about the escrow money. I don't have the MOU that you signed in front of me, but there is something in there that says something like, "The initial, the initial deposit is so much."
Yeah.
And we can come to you for replenishment once our, and I don't remember how it's worded, but the way we work is this-
Well, once it runs down to half, you give them.
But the way we work is this. We don't wait, George's firm sends us bills once a month, and that's usually like six or seven weeks after the charges are incurred.
Yeah.
We don't want to wait for that cycle to be able to see you again.
Okay.
So we will call you in anticipation to make sure that we have enough money on balance. Now, the call that we made to you today, I guess it was,
Yeah.
was late. But the call that we made to you today was to replenish it, to take us through, and that was take us through tonight, George?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so that was because we were hoping somehow, I mean, we're always looking to dispose of these things, favorably, of course. But we're always looking to finish, and George prepared a resolution of approval hoping that we could get everything done, and we can't because things are missing. But that would have been the end of it, and that's the end of his time. Now we have another cycle, or two, or three, or five, who knows how many. So each time, we get to a point where, where, and I think it's-
I understand, but I'll get a invoice for-
Oh, you'll get absolute, but at the end, once we've gotten invoices from his firm, we will get, you're entitled to copies of all that stuff, yes, absolutely.
Fair enough.
And they're very detailed, you'll understand exactly what he did, and I can tell you that I look over them, and I approve them, and I've been doing business with him for a few years, and I-
Yeah, yeah, you know, I was taken back. I've been coming before the boards for quite some time, and that was the most I've ever paid. I guess I should be happy.
You should be happy.
But you almost had a coup of a night.
Okay, before you go, George, we have some members of the public that had their hands raised, and we have a public hearing still open, so. Is a member of the public seeking, yes, hi.
Hi, I'm Arias at 40 Church Streets.
Yes.
I was here last time, and I was wondering if the planning board thought that the noise barrier was adequate, that Mr. Johnson added to the plan.
You know, well.
I mean, now, for me, it's an even bigger concern now that there might be another.
Three buildings, yes.
Yes.
Yes. I, I don't know yet. I mean, you know, there was a flurry of activity here at the last meeting with you and Katie and I forgot who else, looking at things and talking about trees, and, yeah, trees would be good, and John was happy to plant trees and so on. I don't know how, how do we, how can we say that we're happy with it?
Are you unhappy with it?
Well, I haven't seen it.
Oh, it's there, 10 foot in center, I think. 10 foot apart, evergreen.
I know the tree's going to be mature enough that it'll make a difference.
They're going to be similar to what I planted next to Katie.
Also, do you want to put in the minutes that we're going to ask for the revised plan by Friday?
Sure, sure. I mean, you know, that, you can say that applicant has said that he'll have it by, by the end of the week, yeah. Would that be good? Could you have it by the end of this week?
The what?
The whatever, the things that we asked you for. No, well, the new plan with the three new buildings, if that's what you want to do.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to try to get the fire department letter.
Yes.
If I, if I can't get that, then I will.
Well, that's going to take, I think it will take you a while to do the whole, the whole new drawing, maybe not, I don't know.
I don't know.
See if you can answer Ms. Reyes's question.
May I ask if the current trees are going to stay as well?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, so these are additional trees?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, yes, ma'am?
Mr. Stewart, hi, I'm Tessa Killian, I live at 57 Church Street.
Yes, hi, Tessa.
I have a, I listened, I watched and tried to listen to the video from two weeks ago. I have a question and a comment. The question is, I don't understand why a building was built a year ago and now it needs to be converted. It just makes absolute no sense why you build a building not the way you wanted it the first time, why?
Well, it was explained to us last time, or two meetings ago, I don't remember, that the applicant did not want to go through the planning board process because it would take too long and maybe cost too much money.
But that's manipulating the system. That's manipulating the code.
It's, he's, he was following the law. It was not, it's not a direct route, is that the way we would have preferred?
Right, and now you're kind of caught on this situation.
Yes, we are. That's true.
It just doesn't seem to benefit anybody but Johnson.
That's true, that's, that's the way it works, yeah.
Okay, and the comment is that the driveway issue, I think that both the village and state have those laws and those wicks in place for a reason. It exists for a reason. Maybe it's, maybe you're trying to get the absolute minimum here, and maybe there's a reason that they're that wide. One is, yes, so that, and not so there's a height, I mean, it's not steep slope, you know, that side of the street on a hill. So I live across the street from a similar situation, although the driveway's wider, and there are cars that go up and down the driveway, but also lights and people. There's no lighting, so a car's going in the driveway, there could be a person coming, a person walking down the driveway. I mean, it's a dangerous situation, and there are pedestrians, there's plates, there's cars, I mean, it's a lot more than just a fire safety issue. And I see it across the street from me all the time, there's people walking and cars, and I think it's mine, across from me was supposed to be played by feet, too, it's not, can't have two-way traffic, so the cars kind of end up doing this in the driveway, and then at night, there's people wa, it's just a mess. And I think the best thing would be to avoid something like that and try to get the proper width of the driveway that you need.
Well, that's one of the options that we're talking about here.
Yeah, I just want to articulate that I think that a wider driveway would make sense because that's what the code has.
I think we all think that.
Good.
I mean, all of these people maybe, but yeah, I think we all think that.
I'm just looking at it now, and the driveway's just close to the house, you can see that in the plan, you can see it when you walk by it.
I think we would say it's not ideal. Anything else?
And I also just want to support the neighbors that live in the immediate vicinity of this, they have been put through a lot of noise and construction. I can, I've heard the blasting down from my house last year. You're putting these people through another round of construction. So please consider, you're considering Mr. Johnson's proposal, please consider the immediate neighbors to the site and what you're putting them through again with something like this. It's not fair to their quality of life or their property values. You know, I mean, you're considering a new proposal for something, but please consider the people who live on those streets and what's becoming of the street, which is not good.
Yeah, I think the, the.
It's a mess.
The place for that consideration resides in the code, that if a district is zoned to allow a certain number of.
Yes, I sat on the R3 task force with Mr. Zouk, we were, we're not here tonight, but yeah, I'm familiar with it.
Yeah, so.
We tried to get it revised, but no.
We can't say, the planning board cannot say that, you know, it's just, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if.
Sounds like you're not wrong.
Well, we can't say, you know, enough on this street already, but you know, what we can say is that.
There's no land left, it doesn't really matter.
Right, but what we can say is that you have to build this safely, you have to have enough setbacks, you have to do, you know, these kinds of things, we have to execute the code.
And I appreciate the work that you do, thank you.
Well, and thank you for coming. Any other comments from the public? Okay, Mr.? Are you okay now?
I'm okay.
Okay. Madam LaFarge, can you go to, no, no, sorry. Now, do we have to continue the public hearing? Yes. May I have a motion to continue the public hearing? Now, do we, excuse me one second. Do we, yeah, I guess we can say that it's in two weeks, we'll, we ought to have something. We can have, we can have your next thing.
Absolutely.
Now, can we say, let's say by next Tuesday, you will have your stuff to the building department and.
A week from today?
Yes.
Yep.
And if there's a new drawing, that has to be a PDF sent, just like you did the last one, on that checklist.
And would I have to repost?
No, you don't have to do anything, we're continuing the.
Repost, you mean?
The public hearing?
Move, yeah. No, no. No, the continued public hearing.
We're continuing it, so the same.
Okay.
The same notice thing. Rich, I heard you say something, and I interrupted you, sorry.
I could, we must continue the public hearing.
Do I have a second to that? Is there any further discussion about that? May I have a vote, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, ladies, for coming. Jonathan, yes, Ms. Harsh.
I do have, I guess, I need to read over the thing that George created.
The meeting memo?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, not that, the declaration.
And I dismiss?
You're dismissed.
You're way dismissed.
I do.
Karen, you have to stay.
I do.
That's not happening tonight.
Yeah, but I do have questions about, before I ask those questions, I should read this and make sure that I'm asking what I.
Read it, and you can either send it an email, or we'll talk about it next time.
Can I send an email? I thought it had to be said out loud.
You can send me an email.
What format?
Yes, well, it should be, but if there's something that needs prior consideration, you can send it ahead, but we do have to do it in public. Okay, so you're, you're, oh, we have minutes.
Before George goes, I have a question. I got a notice, my neighbor's got a ZB A hearing on the 11th. How come the board doesn't get recommendations anymore?
Sure. I don't know why not, they must, they are obligated to get recommendations, requests from the ZB A.
You know, I don't know probably what to say about that. It's been a frustration, it's an issue, it's the law.
It is the law, they didn't change anything here.
No, I mean, not that I know of.
I mean, I don't know what other hearings they're having, I just happen to be a neighbor who got his notice, happens to be on planning board of notice, we weren't noticed.
How do you suggest I deal with this?
Meeting with Carl, I guess. What else?
I shouldn't have a constitutional crisis? Okay.
With Carl without.
But while we aren't getting notified, we're supposed to be noticed that they have this application, and we're supposed to give our recommendation.
Now, what does it do to their process, though? I might happen to be supportive of my neighbor's need for a variance, but can she get it next week without us?
I think it probably is one of many that have been issued.
There have been many.
I got one.
Yeah, there have been many, and.
I'll look at that and let's just see what it says. I mean, that's usually considered a jurisdictional issue.
Bye-bye, thanks for coming.
So I'll just check our code.
I'm going to realize there are issues going on right now.
Okay, so there are minutes from January 21st. Do we have, John, you still have seven minutes with us, buddy?
Yeah.
All right.
I'm good.
Brogan, did John leave a check, or did he?
And it's for $700. Okay, so.
So it catches up.
So that's up for now, yeah.
See what comes next.
Typically, what is the procedure for informing John about outstanding balances?
Well, I'll tell you what I do in other towns, I send a letter or an email to the village saying that we need another advance, and then, and then the village contacts the applicant and just refers that request.
What has happened in the past is that George and I have spoken about these things, and one of us will say, we're at the end of the escrow, or we're nearing it, we should get more because these next two meetings are going to bring us over the top. And then I call you or who used to be you and say, "Please contact the applicant, we need another $1,200, another $2,000, another whatever it is."
So when, so for example, Floyd brought in a $100 check last week, that was from Paulie.
That was, no, that was a different thing, what?
That was his application.
Yes, that was his application fee for the plant approval, which I didn't even know we had. I didn't know that there is such an application fee, and maybe there is, maybe there isn't, I don't know. But we have, Floyd has been also bringing us checks for escrow replenishment. And he does it, Floyd was like a dream applicant, yes, I mean, he, he did everything right the first time and paid money even before we asked for it. So, everybody's not like that, as you will see, if you haven't seen.
So for Mr. Johnson, for the next check that he gives, should I inform him whenever he contacts us on Tuesday?
We will, George, I will communicate with you by email, either directly to you, or I will ask George to send you his estimate for how much we should ask for.
Let's see what he does.
So if he has a little bit more time.
See what he comes up with. If he just gets the letter from the building depart, from the fire department.
Then it's done.
Yeah, then it's done, that's it.
I don't need anything.
Right. Okay, so that's that. Now, we have minutes from January 21st. Is that true? That was the last meeting. Does anybody have any comments about, now, the minutes, the draft that you sent did not include anything but the, right? You didn't make the changes that I asked you to make? I didn't see them, I'm sorry. When did you send that?
I sent them on Monday, the day that you called me.
Okay, so Monday would have been, you mean yesterday?
Was it yesterday? Yeah, it must have been yesterday.
Yesterday was the third, okay. I don't remember seeing it, so maybe I'm.
Yeah, I took out the secret catalog and I added the action items.
Okay, do you have?
Yeah, that's what I got.
I think this is the latest copy, I'm not sure, though.
Yes, it is.
I gave it to you with your agenda.
Thank you, thank you, okay. So, are there any comments or corrections for the minutes as?
Mr. Rocko gave me the suggestion.
Yes.
I misspelled Michael's name.
Oh, without the I, maybe?
I put a G.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Good catch.
I just corrected it.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Any other further corrections? Any other nits? All in favor of accepting the draft minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, we are approved. Yeah, who moved it? I moved it. Who seconds that we approve the?
John seconded.
Thank you, John. Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moving. I move, I moved out.
Second, second to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Tom, would you like to vote to adjourn?
I'm going to adjourn.
Okay, good.